I'd like to call this a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Monday, March 10th, 2025. We switched our format to virtual today, so we'll dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance. Starting off today, we have a review with our Beautification Committee. Sarah, thank you for coming this evening, and you will provide us just as a general update on the committee, which we'd love to hear, but also an update on your Adopt a Garden Program, which we iterated on a few times, but I'm excited about it. So, thank you for coming.
You are on.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, there you go. Now we can do yours. So, I'll hand the floor to you.
Okay.
I'm just gonna let Sarah be able to share her screen.
Okay.
Thank you. Let me know when that's done. I still don't see a share screen option.
All right, it should... Is it there now?
Let's check under more. Share.
Let's try another way.
Hold on, let me try.
There we go.
Oh, there we go.
Great. Okay, so that is sharing this screen. So what I'm gonna do is move... Oh, will that work? Let's see, hold on one second. Allow... And then that is showing that. What are you seeing now? Although, it's just... Is it just showing? Okay, let's see if I move this one over here. Can you see that? And then that. Is that showing? Okay, great. Perfect. Let's see if I can do presentation mode. Sorry about this. All right, well, it's not in presentation mode, but you guys get the idea. Yeah, exactly. All right, well, thank you all for having me. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Schwartz. I'm on the Beautification Commission, the Chair, and have been on the Commission about three years. I'd like to talk about our renamed Darien Blooms Project. It is so over the past three years, the Beautification has been Commission has been re-envisioning what was formerly known as the Adopt a Garden Program. The program was designed many years ago to allow parcels of town properties to be adopted by businesses. We have identified approximately seventeen of these parcels around town. In the previous business model, the assigned garden would be planted and maintained by the business who adopted it in exchange for their installation, care, and maintenance. That business name would be displayed on a sign in the garden. These gardens have fallen into various stages of disrepair, and the Beautification Commission would like to see these gardens improved. Our goal is to have a tidy and cohesive appearance across all of the town gardens, and the plants would need to be as low-maintenance as possible, drought-tolerant, salt-tolerant, deer-tolerant, relatively low in height, so not to obstruct traffic sightlines, and preferably contain native plants that fit in with a coastal Connecticut aesthetic. Here's an example of one of those. You've probably seen these around town. This is one's located near Near Water Lane and Post Road near Henley. After identifying the individual gardens and their needs, we reached out to approximately ten landscapers and to see who was interested in taking on the project. Only one expressed interest in this was ELM, Eastern Land Management. ELM created seventeen proposals for us for each of these gardens, keeping the installation budget for each one around or under $3,000 per garden. They also priced out annual maintenance and watering, because new gardens need extra care, need extra maintenance the first three years. And included in our analysis was one-time installation costs, three years of watering, three years of maintenance, including mulch, and we factored in inflation. Our estimate for these three years totaled $150,000 for the seventeen gardens. And using the previous model of having one business sponsor each garden, this meant that we'd be asking individual businesses to spend around $8,000 to $10,000 per garden. We spoke to the Chamber of Combers, Baywater Properties, and a selection of other businesses in Darien to see what they thought about this pricing structure, and the answer was that the price would just be too costly to expect to find seventeen businesses that would individually sponsor these gardens. So, in December, we met with John and Jennifer at Gentile and discussed that taking on these seventeen gardens and raising $150,000 was probably gonna be too expensive, too resource-draining, and too complicated for our Commission to successfully achieve. So, between the four or five of us, it was decided that the Commission would select a few gardens. We talked about five or six possibly, and be allocated about $10,000 from the town of money to apply to these gardens. We would also run a fundraising campaign to see if we can gather more funds, and then the gardens that were not selected in our process would eventually be tidied up or grassed over. We discussed that this work would hopefully start this spring, and we would be using ELM to design and install the plants and maintain new gardens, as well as doing seasonal plantings, mulch, and plant replacement. Darien Public Works would be responsible for mowing, and Darien Park and Rec Department will be responsible for watering with their new watering truck. So, let me show you the next slide. Our Commission met and we selected these gardens as top priorities. Near Water Lane at Post Road, and I'll get into these in a bit, Noroten Heights Train Station, the Welcome to Darien sign at Exit 11 in the southbound, that triangle right there by the Corbin Project, Post Road across from the intersection of Mansfield Avenue, next to the same side of the road as the Darien Fire Station, Tokeneek Road at Five Mile River Road, and the Welcome to Darien sign at Exit 13, southbound. There are gonna be... Oops, sorry. There are some other gardens that will not be included, and these are just a couple examples of them in their various states right now. Some of them have some healthy plants and will just be maintained. Some of them, we might decide to grass over. We'll see if we can keep them nice and tidy. Maybe we have volunteers from the Commission take care of them. So, and also, hopefully, if we raise some funds, maybe we can improve these other gardens. For the fundraising campaign, we met with a member of Park and Rec who used this company, That's My Brick, successfully for the Weed Beach Playground and Playground by the Sound a few years ago. And this is some example of their work. We are just starting the early process of talking to them and starting a campaign there. We also, Ed Gentile had talked to DOT about some ideas of where we could install these bricks, and we had thought that the Garden 11, excuse me, which is the one on the Post Road near the Darien Fire Station, would be a good place to put them. These are some ideas for how we could improve it, but this is that location. It has... It has... In this garden, the scouts did a major cleanup last summer, which you can see in the photo in the top right. They made it look a lot nicer, but the masonry work in this garden is really in not a good shape. It needs to be fixed. So, we thought this would be an excellent location to put in these engraved bricks if we can secure enough donations. We also had Seasons 2 generously offered to donate a teak bench for this space, too. So, we thought we could really improve it. There's a bus stop nearby. It's very near Starbucks. It's across from Post Corner Pizza. We thought it would be a really nice place to improve and utilize. You see a lot more utility come out of it. So... ELM has given us a lot of direction on which plants to use. These are a couple examples in this slide of what they look like. We also have one of our members on our Commission is a student at UConn. She's a landscaping architecture student, and so she's also given us a lot of good feedback and working with ELM together, because she understands the town as well, as does, of course, ELM, but she grew up here and has a good understanding of the look and the plants that would work well. So, this is just a couple examples of what we're looking at. The plan is to plant grasses, vinca, nepota. We'd like to put in a lot of daffodil bulbs, and we'd like to use as many natives as we can, as that fits. Each location may vary based on its... The light it gets, the shade it gets, all those sort of things, but we'd like there to be some consistency across the gardens, so there's a cohesive appearance across town. The pricing of the scope of work has changed since the inception, so ELM has created some new invoices for us. Given the budget of $10,000, what they have done is focused on three gardens, and I'll get into that. We focused on Gardens 2, 3, and 7. So, Garden 2 is Near Water Lane at Post Road. This one has heavy foot traffic, because this is the median crossing that's close to Henley School. It also is where a lot of people go down to Weed Beach. It's pretty near town. It's got three churches and three shopping centers nearby, and that's why we chose this small location. The image on the left is what it looks like right now, more or less. The image on the right is a drawing that is a virtual drawing that was created, giving you a sense of what it could look like when planted. There might be some variation in plants, but this gives you a general sense of how that will look. So, ELM has quoted $3,418 for this garden. That will be for labor, demo, prep, plants, and mulch. And... These are some other ideas we might end up using, but overall, the same concept. The next garden that we priced out is Garden 3. This is Noroten Heights at Darien Train Station. These are the southbound tracks near the entrance. There are actually two small gardens at that location. One of those gardens is these top-left photos. This one is not being addressed. This was actually just cleaned up last summer by the Darien Beautification Commission, because it'd been accidentally removed. And the one, this picture on the right, is what it could look like. That's also a virtual... So, this is a larger area. We have some ideas on what can go in here, and we'd like to see a few natives go in there. The quote for this is $31,31... Sorry, $3,431, once again, for labor, demo, prep, plants, mulch, et cetera. The next garden that we focused on is Garden 7, Welcome to Darien sign at Exit 11. This is the triangle that's near I-95 southbound. This is the one near the Corbin Project. We have some ideas of what to do here. Currently, the garden that was created is on a side-section, and let me show you the next image. It's very large, and it looks like this. Sorry, it's not a great photo. Here's what the intersection looks like from above. We did plant out... Plan out what it would be in its current location. I actually am thinking that I'd like to, or we as a Commission would like to move it to under the Welcome to Darien sign and shrink it a bit, but for purposes of what I have right now, the quote is... We have it down to... What is it? $2,334. This garden actually, though, has a lot of interest from Corbin Project. Baywater Properties is interested in giving some money, and actually, the Darien Garden Club is also interested in this site. So, it's possible that we could start planting with the money we have, and then we could also improve on this site, too. There's a lot happening in that area, so I feel like it's probably best starting small and then growing and seeing what works. But we felt that that was a very good place to create color, and a lot of people enter our town right there, right by the sports shop, so we thought that would be a really nice place to improve. So, given the $10,000 budget that we're currently working with, that basically uses that up, but we feel very confident that we can fundraise and get some extra money pretty quickly. So, we have also got some other gardens that we're gonna put as our kind of Phase 2. And Garden 15 at Tokeneek Road and Five Mile River Road is one of these gardens. It's a bad photo, but this is where that is. It's right near Tokeneek School. This is a busy intersection near Tokeneek, and a lot of traffic from Row 8 comes this way, so we thought this would be a great way to... Another great location to show. We have some ideas of if this tree survives and if it blooms, so we're keeping an eye on how well that's doing in that area. Another garden that we'd really like to improve and focus on is the Welcome to Darien sign at Exit 13. So, this is right across from the car wash. There's a... Let me show you a picture. Looks like this. Welcome to Darien. And here's an image of what it currently looks like on the left, and on the right is an image of what was proposed by ELM with some of the plants they've suggested. So, it could be a lot more presentable. We do have a pricing for this garden, looking like that. So, I have that available as well. It's approximately $3,000. But we could improve that and make it better, I mean, more or less, depending on what we feel like. And there are other suggestions for that. Excuse me, let's go here. These are just a few examples around town of other gardens that are commercially-owned that have been improved, and it's really nice to see all these great improvements around town. So, we're hoping that Phase 1 planting can start this spring with the first three gardens that we suggested, and then hopefully, start our marketing campaign as soon as you feel it's appropriate. And if that's the case, hopefully, we can raise enough funds to do some more and do a Phase 2.
All right, I'm gonna try to walk.
And so, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you, and the Beautification Commission, thanks to you for hearing us out.
Sarah, thank you. This is terrific. Anyone have any questions for Sarah?
John, I have a couple.
Oh, I was just going to make the comment that, you know, thank you for the presentation, and I think it's so vitally important, the work that you folks do. I mean, there's no change in the first impression, and to have the beautification of these touchpoints for people when they initially come into town are really, really invaluable. And thank you for your work, and thank you for this presentation.
Thank you.
Monica?
Yeah. Sarah, this looks really, really exciting, and like Mike said, you're going to be reaching a lot of eyeballs. I have two kind of granular questions. One is, is there any kind of a guarantee on the plants?
So, there is. It's a good question, and I'm pretty sure there is, but what I could do is double-check with ELM. I mean, as you know, they're very reputable, and we have a contract written up with them, so I'll go back and review just to see what that would be, because I can't remember what the exact guarantee is on them, but I'll go back and review that.
Okay, that would be great. And then, your Park and Rec is going to do the watering?
That's what we had discussed, and I'll probably lean on John or Jennifer a little bit to help with that, because... Or Ed, I don't know. But that's what we had discussed in our meeting, just because they have that new watering truck, and we thought it could be utilized, save us money, too, instead of having to outsource it. We do have a quote, by the way, of if that doesn't work out, we do have a quote of what it costs to water, and it's $330 a day, but that would be hitting seventeen locations. So, we could rework that, but they do have that option should we need it.
Yeah. I don't know how you manage the guarantee on the plants. We had a little problem over at Highland, and then the watering, if it's, you know, if it's the town's responsibility to water. But I think a guarantee on the plants is definitely something to at least ask about. But great initiative, really. Thanks for coming back to us. Really exciting.
Good. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with this. I think this is terrific, and Mike's exactly right, Mike, as well, that these first impressions matter. Jennifer Charneste, on just funding for this, would we be able to get a transfer out of this year's budget to cover this so that the planting work can be done in the spring?
Sarah, can you remind me with what you have in the current budget? Was... I know the $10,000 we have in the request for next year. Did you have anything available in the current budget that isn't spoken for yet?
Well, I need... We have our meeting actually this week, and I will check with our treasurer on that. We had kind of allocated some money, I think it was $5,000, and that was like a cleanup. That was to clean up all the gardens, and then there was discussion about using the $10,000, but that being really focused on, you know, planting these gardens and then not being a general maintenance for all seventeen.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'll touch base with Sarah after their meeting, after they've had a chance to talk it through and see what they have available in their existing budget, and then for the balance, I'm sure we can cover it from contingency.
Okay, great. Great.
Yeah, so I know this planning kind of needs to get done in the spring and not wait. So, I think this is really great. I don't have any other questions. Anyone else have anything for Sarah?
Sure, Marcy. I have a quick question. In regards to the fundraising with the bricks and the location that you guys ended up thinking that you want to look into, was there any other places or areas that you guys considered?
Honestly, not really. We did consider maybe outlining these locations with bricks, but they're mostly in roadways, and first of all, they wouldn't be seen. Second of all, they'd probably be run over and crushed anyway. That was one consideration. As far as like the town lands, things that don't impact Park and Rec, there weren't too many choices, so we really kind of focused in on this garden, most also because it needed that new masonry work anyway. Though, if you have any other suggestions, we'd certainly be open to it. We did consider doing a plaque instead of bricks, but it came back to the bricks sort of work, so we didn't really explore it too much beyond that.
Okay. Yeah, I'll keep thinking about that. I just... I know that building that's next to it, that white building, I think it's on the market, right? So, I only get concerned about that space needing to be revamped for whatever happens in that area. So, I certainly don't want people to invest in bricks there and then have to pull them up and not have them in their final, you know, location. But it's, you know, that's really kind of down the pipeline.
But that location, that location is actually DOT land, so even that house being or that business being for sale should not impact that.
Impact it. Okay.
Quite frankly, I had to talk to... Because even Darien doesn't... It's, you know, DOT. Ed had to talk to DOT to make sure they were okay with it. So, I don't know that the sale of that property would impact it too much. Thank you for that.
Sarah, anyone have any questions?
Yes, a couple of quick questions. Sarah, thank you so much for doing this, and I'm excited to see this happening. A couple of quick questions. I'm assuming that all the plants are perennial, so that we're not perpetually going back every year and redoing this, yes?
Not entirely. I mean, the ones that are outlined here are mostly perennials.
Right.
But we actually thought it would be nice to have a few annuals. There are not many in there, but that's the best way to get color, and sometimes that's the best way to get some pop. So, there is a small little budget for some annuals, because there is some maintenance involved in this, and if they're getting water, that should be fine. So, but for the majority of this, they are perennials. I mean, this is...
Okay, yeah. And then the second question, to the conversation that we were just having with Marcy and you about the bricks, my only comment about the bricks is that people love to go see the brick that they've paid for, and then they've sponsored. I know it was fun to go show my kids the ones we did down at Weed Beach, so to put it near a walkway or something, it would be very difficult. If, you know, that lovely area by Henley, which I would love to see with lovely flowers, is a tough intersection and not a great place for people to kind of go, oh, look, let's go find our brick. So, my suggestion would be to have it somewhere where people can easily and safely get to.
Thanks. Okay, great. Well, then that would work with it being at the Garden 11, because that is off the road, and it's a nice place and would have a bench in it. So, and people could even sit and wait for the bus stop or have a Starbucks and, you know, sit and drink a coffee while they wait there. So, that would work.
Thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Anyway, just quickly, a last point. You can check maybe with our Town Council, but with regard to warranties, I mean, these are commercial goods. They're probably subject to some minimum warranties under the Uniform Commercial Code, so for fitness of their purpose and marketability. So, there's probably some level of warranty that you would automatically get for these plant products, I would think.
Yeah, I agree, and ELM is a pretty reputable company on that front, and they've done business around here quite a bit. So, we'll definitely include that in their proposal. Just thanks from me as well. I think this is great, and really a big thank you to everybody on your Commission. I think I've met with you, what, a couple of, three times now, and everybody's enthusiastic. I absolutely love it, and this is great. So, I don't know... Clearly, you've got full support tonight. I don't know that we need to vote on anything later when we have an appropriation or, excuse me, a transfer to do this later. Is that right, Jennifer?
That's correct. And then for the donations, I'll talk that through with Sarah, because we will likely have to go through at least the Board of Selectmen, and then depending on the amount, all the way through to the RTM.
Great. Okay. Well, there are no other questions, Sarah. You're a star. I really appreciate you coming to us tonight and talking about this, and we can't wait to see this as it all comes together this spring.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time, and Jennifer, you and I can connect after or tomorrow or something. Great. Thanks. Have a great evening. Thanks, everybody.
All right, terrific. Okay, next up is First Selectman's Report. Just a couple of things. One is that on February 25th, I gave a presentation about the town's debt to the RTM, so thanks to Jennifer and Lynn Palin and Jack Davis and a number of others who helped with different perspectives on that. But what I wanted to do with that presentation is to start a discussion about respectively where the town's debt could go, given many large projects we have underway or are considering, and this ranges obviously from Great Island, but also our school renovations and the prospect of the future of additional such renovations. And the result of all of that is that we currently are carrying debt that is at an historic high for the town, and the prospects are that that debt will grow quite a bit before it gets back on a downward track. So, if you're interested, please go to TV79's website and take a look at that presentation. I tried to provide some background and education about what got us to this point and what the prospects are for future debt. So, it's a town-wide conversation that I want to start having, and I think just presenting some of those facts allows us to get to a common understanding of the challenge that we face with all that, but also the manageability of that challenge. So, please take a look. If you're interested, I'm happy to talk to anybody who's got questions. Tomorrow, I'm going to be filming another series of episodes on the Ask the First Selectman video series, which Jim Cameron at TV79 cooked up last summer. We've got a number of questions, but always welcome to have more questions. So, if anyone watching has some questions they would like me to answer in one of the short videos that we'll be preparing tomorrow, you can send your questions to DarienTV79@gmail.com, and Jim will put them on the list, so definitely do that. My last update is a call that we had with a number of state and federal officials today, as well as state legislators in Connecticut, about this Quiet Zone study that's been underway for a while. So, as a refresher, this is an effort to try to see if what's called a quiet zone can be put in along the New Canaan Branch Line. A quiet zone is not a silent zone. A quiet zone would be to just silence the train horns for trains that are passing crossings along the New Canaan Branch Line. So, today's call was pretty helpful. Those who have been following this know that a potential source of expense in the implementation of a quiet zone is something called a constant warning time waiver, which fixes the amount of time between gates, when gates go down and when a train passes. Those historically have been required for quiet zones, and today, the federal administration officials said that that will not be required for the New Canaan Branch Line, so that will cut the prospective cost of this project by a lot, upwards of $9 to $10 million, which is extremely good news. The second thing was next steps, which is both the feds and the State Department of Transportation are going to require a more in-depth diagnostic of the crossings along the New Canaan Branch Line, and that will help them get a sharper view as to what And that will help them get a sharper view as to what the safety issues are and how they should be managed. Uh, we need to take that seriously anytime municipalities recommend a quiet zone implementation. Uh, it does expose municipalities to liabilities. So should there be an accident in the future, we'd have to consider that. Uh, but our goal, if we move forward with this, is to follow the state and federal regulations uh pretty precisely, not just closely, precisely, so that we minimize the prospect of that. So I know a number of viewers of these meetings have wondered about our progress there. I think the news today was good. Uh, so we will continue with the diagnostic and more to come. Uh, that's it for me unless anyone has any questions. Okay, next up, Jennifer, Town Administrator's Report.
That actually was an oversight that was not removed from the agenda um when we were going through that, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Um, what is on reports? Mr. Burke?
Uh, good evening. The uh Blight Review Board will be meeting on uh Wednesday, so we will have an update uh after that. I'll take the rest of the the time, just do a little plug. Uh, the depot is having a fundraiser on March 22nd at uh, wait for it, Pickleball America and uh opportunities to play for people of all uh levels. I'll have instruction instructors there and it's from seven to 11. If you go on the depot site, you can see the uh details. It looks like it'll be a uh good amount of fun and a good fundraiser for those um, for those folks. So give it a thought.
Now, Mike, does this include championship play on your part perhaps, to which there will be tickets sold?
Uh, no, they they don't. When you go on the website, there are levels of of play and it's teach me how, kind of okay, next stop Wimbledon. So and everyone can fill in whatever they think that they uh need. But they are, they will have instructors for uh beginner play and so the good opportunity to learn how to play a little, have some fun and support the depot.
Well, I can understand why you didn't want to do that because tickets to your play would raise far too much money and that that could be a problem. So, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
That that's a great cause. I I hope uh folks can see their way to clear clear to support that. Okay, thank you. Uh, Marcy?
Sure. Um, so our mental health task force will meet on April 8th and I will have a more robust update as we uh meet just about every three months. Um, but just FYI, uh, Ally Ramseck will be hosting her QPR training. Uh, this is the second one that we'll be doing. I highly, highly recommend to anyone who has not taken it yet um to go ahead and do that. It is on March 27th at Darian Town Hall. It's from 10:00 AM to 11:30, so it's not uh, it's not a huge commitment, but a tremendous amount of information um to help uh with anybody who you think might be in a mental health crisis.
Okay, terrific. Uh, Sarah?
So I've no update on the thriving um Darian Task Force. And the Hinley Homes and Royal Building Committee will next meet on March 26th. Uh, Wednesday at 6:00 PM was a move from the meeting that was originally scheduled from the 19th. The ONG team has a meeting that night, so we're moving it um just back one week.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you. And Monica?
Um, for Great Island, last Friday in Stanford Superior Court, two independent virtual hearings were held regarding the motions to dismiss the two tree warden appeals. The judge listened carefully to both sides and our legal counsel expects a decision within 120 days. Last Saturday, Reed Hildebrand hosted the third community engagement session, which had our highest turnout ever. Um, I think we had probably about 275, maybe 300 people attend the two sessions. So thank you to everyone that that um came out. The latest community survey was launched the same day. It closes on March 23rd um a Sunday and um, but you don't have to wait until March 3rd to get it in. It'll take you about 10 to 15 minutes. And every one of these surveys builds on the previous one and the information is really, really important. So um, I want to um thank everyone for for um for filling it out. And I want to thank Tony Campanella from Public Works for um putting out the 11 um or the 10 flyers that you have seen around town. So you can also find the survey online at greatisland.darianct.gov. So please fill it out. Thanks.
And I'm sorry, what's the what's the um uh due date for that survey again?
March 23rd.
March 23rd, okay. Okay, terrific. Thank you. Um. Public comments, Jennifer, do we have any public comments or does anyone on the phone wish to make a public comment?
We do. We received three emails um from Lois Schneider, uh Cindy Torres and Max Patrick, which I did forward to you. Lois has requested to speak. Um, and then I haven't heard from anyone else, but if anyone on the line wants to, we could have them raise their hand. Um, and um, we'll go right down the list and unmute people to give.
All right, uh, we will go to Lois Burks. Lois, are you there?
Okay, just getting all the pieces in place. Okay, can you see me?
Okay, you're up first. Please go ahead.
Okay, um, good evening. Thank you for um giving me the time to speak. My name is Lois Schneider and I live at 31 Maywood Road. I am a member of the RTM um Public Health and Safety Committee, but these thoughts represent my own views. I am concerned that the idea of leaving a substantial part of Great Island dog free is not being considered. The initial trial of dogs on Great Island took place in the dead of winter with no parking on the island. Even with minimal access, posted rules and regulations were not followed. As observed from video footage, 49 dogs were in the restricted area and 14 dogs were off leash with two dogs off leash in the eagle's nest area. Yet not a single ticket was issued. One could expect that the problems identified in this trial would be addressed before more of the island was opened and dog access expanded. Instead, the GIAC voted to allow dogs on leash all over the island except for the bridle path. Here are some suggestions before expanding the access. Assign the current animal control officer to Great Island only. Or hire an additional animal control office specifically for Great Island and expense it to the Great Island Management Fund. Issue tickets to send a message to dog owners that we are serious about the rules being followed. Check all dogs for licenses at the same time. Raise the fines. Stop saying it needs to be done and let's just do it. Issue tickets for those entering the restricted area to protect the eagle nesting site. Enforcing state and federal laws with fines up to $1,000 or 30 days in jail as listed in the Connecticut General Stat statutes. And also define major areas to be dog free to accommodate the portion of the citizens that would prefer the island to be dog free. Once, once dogs are on the island, once dogs are allowed on most of the island, there is no going back. It will be difficult, if not impossible, to rescind the decision exemplified by the current GIAC behavior already. They are rewarding bad behavior and enabling more of the same. We should all be able to enjoy the island, sit, have a picnic and not have to think about dogs. We should not have to worry that where we are sitting was previously used by dogs for their waste. And we should respect children and adults who are frightened or uncomfortable around dogs. I think the island can be shared. Great Island is a beautiful addition to our town. It should serve all the citizens and not give priority to dog owners. Thank you for considering these ideas and your efforts on this project.
Thank you, Lois. We appreciate it. Um. Next up, uh, Ina Kaz Kaznavi.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, as Lois, I'm also addressing about the planned discussion and votes tonight regarding the dogs um of being allowed, allowing dogs all year and anywhere that visitors can go on Great Island. Um, I'm reading this because of the time limit. As a fellow dog owner and someone dependent on her dogs in various situations due to hearing loss, I do understand the GIC members who voted to allow dogs on Great Island without restriction other than the bridle path and on leash. However, in making this motion and the discussion that ensued prior to its vote, the committee did not discuss some relevant factors, which I believe are important and hope this board will consider tonight. The first is that the GIC last year decided to limit the period for dogs to accommodate, as I understand, to accommodate migratory birds. Biohabitat informed the GIC of not just the bald eagle, but two species of egrets that have been identified on the island that are federally protected migratory birds under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act of 1918. The ecologists also advised that more study was needed to have a full inventory of all the wildlife on Great Island, which could identify other protected species. As I understand, the GIC decided not to proceed. And to quote the ecologist, dogs even on leash can have an extremely high negative impact on the island's wildlife. The second is that the town, the towns across Connecticut and US have been banning or limiting dog exit for a number of reasons, including disturbance to important wildlife. The third is Great Island is already experiencing lease violations and lack of control and protected areas during cold weather months when there's significantly less visitors. So you can anticipate the population of dogs is going to swell as we get to warmer weather and then once cars are allowed onto the property. The third is Great Island is already experienced, excuse me, the the last is that Darian already limits or bans dogs in public areas. Weed is limited. There's a ban at Peachtree and Diller. What compels the town to not impose limits on Great Island, which is known to be ecologically sensitive and an important wildlife habitat? To put closure, according to consultant Reed, residents were almost equally divided on allowing dogs. Why not limit dogs to a period when they have minimal impact on Great Island's resources? And the remainder time provide residents that are seeking the tracal open space have that opportunity as well. I encourage the bo- the board as well as GIC members to listen back to the recorded GIAC meetings where many of the bug points were made in more details and factor them into your decision. Dogs are for the moment allowed until March 31st. Why not stick to the decision for now? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Okay, so, uh, Cheryl. You're on mute, Cheryl. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm babbling away. Um. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but after Lois's um speech and Ina's speech, I thought it was important to also give my two cents. Um, as I have said before, I'm a dog owner, a grand dog owner, and I've had dogs all my life and I don't disrespect people that do have dogs. But I think that I just watched the meeting, the Great Island meeting today, and I do agree that we need to step back on this and take another look at it. I think that uh Lois's points were very well uh given to you tonight to sit back and think about this a little longer. The other thing I heard in the meeting was that, oh, there's 20,000 people going into the island. And I think Jim Palin said something to that effect. However, that could very well be, they're not all Darian residents. This island is open to everybody and everybody has the uh opportunity to go in there, Stanford, Norwalk, Greenwich, anybody. And until our beaches are closed, they all need a beach pass to park at Pear Tree. But right now, there's plenty of parking down there and they have a a lot of people that don't even have beach passes. So the people that are disregarding the rules and regulations now will continue to disregard the rules and regulations. They do it at Woodland Park, they do it at Cherry Lawn, they do it at Pear Tree. Uh, it's sad, but I think until we get someone in better control and we only have one animal control officer, so that has to watch over all our parks and all our town streets and everything else, that this isn't going to work very well. And one more thing, someone ve- mentioned putting a dog park up there. Well, with this amount of money, I think a dog park is an outrageous even idea. However, a few years ago, the Park and Rec Commission offered a dog park at Cherry Lawn to be fenced in and they, the people that had the dogs didn't want it. So they don't want a dog park here. However, I know people that go to the dog parks in New Canaan and Norwalk, so I can't figure that one out. But that's something that needs to be brought out and um, I'm surprised uh Lori didn't bring it out when that was discussed. But they don't want to be, they don't want to have their dogs fenced in. And this attitude that I don't care for the rules and regulations has got to stop. Because if you pass the school bus, you get the ticket. So I will be proposing in our Park and Rec meeting that we have to go through with a new fine. And the fine will be $200 or more. And I think then maybe people will wake up and um abide by the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Let's see, we have a hand raised from Debbie. So Debbie, you have the floor and we'll need your full name, please.
Oh, I'm Debbie Privet, Richmond Drive. Uh, thank you, everybody, for your time. Um. First, I want to say I think Sarah did a beautiful job with her presentation on behalf of the Beautification Committee. And it's especially important to me because I am one of the redheaded stepchildren, I think, on the northeastern part of Darian. Uh, so it's great to see that uh some of that hopefully will touch the Welcome to Darian sign. Um, on that note, uh, and to repeat John's words, first impressions do matter. And I think um this side of town uh kind of gets ignored and um particularly uh with commercial properties. Um, and it's really giving Darian a bad look. And uh, I too wanted to put out there the the subject of fines or something to get our commercial neighbors to uh appreciate our town and and what a beautiful place it is. I mean, I've, I'm a third generation Dariannite, so uh um, I know just what a special place this is. So and I I think we all need the town's help and I'm not quite sure where to go with that. Um, I'm I'm finding it difficult to navigate um through our town government and um get things done. So that that's why I came to this forum tonight. Um, because I appreciate you all, uh, your service to our town. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. Um, and I I I don't quite know where to go with this, but uh I just wanted my voice to be heard for a few minutes. So I thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate it. Other comments? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our uh new business now. So first up is to discuss and take action on the acquisition of DOT property. This is a a little odd, but of an odd request, but you each received a copy of the correspondence that we received from the Department of Transportation. There is about 150 square feet, believe it or not, of land that is right around the Bank of America building that's just been torn down over by Goodwives uh Shopping Center. And these are little strips of land that come around and make almost a quarter circle uh covering sidewalks and strips of land between the sidewalks and the actual where the building was itself that for some odd reason are owned by the Department of Transportation. And they have sent us a letter asking us to consider simply taking ownership of that land so that it gets off their books. So um so the town councils look at this, I think a few.
Did I make any sense at all? I started rambling.
Hi, hi Debbie. You're all done. Thank you. You're completely clear. Thanks. So this uh request from the DOT is that we uh essentially assign documentation that we transfer ownership of the property uh to the town of Darian. We have checked with council on this as well as folks internally and there's no issue with it. It's an extraordinarily small parcel, uh, but it was a land acquisition. It would have to go from us to uh the RTM. Uh, Jennifer, any other comments? Have I left anything out?
No, I think that was it.
Okay, so anyway, you have the map there and you can see these tiny little spots of land. It's uh, I think the oddest land requests I've ever seen. But I think we we can accommodate this uh for the Department of Transportation. So uh, are there any questions? Okay, could I get a motion? It's good for great. Could I get a motion to um, sign documentation that would enable us throughout and to recommend to the RTM that would enable the town of Darian to acquire the property that the Department of Transportation would like to convey to us as outlined in their correspondence to us of January 8th, 2025. Okay, Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in. Okay, Sarah moves. Marcy seconds, all in favor? Okay, great, thank you. So we will move that to the RTM and get them to consider that at their next meeting. Next up, discuss and take action on proposed Great Island rule. Monica.
Okay, so over the last year, the town has been working through decisions about public access and usage policies for Great Island, including whether and where dogs should be allowed. As a lifelong dog owner myself, I know how much they are a part of our family. For sixteen years, Topper was a big part of our family and I understand the joy and the responsibility that comes with them. So after discussion and a five to four vote, the committee has recommended expanding dog access. So at this point, dogs are not allowed on paved areas. And the committee voted to allow dogs to basically go wherever their human would go. They would not be allowed in the bridle area and they would be required to be on leash as our original rules were and they would, you know, you would be required to pick up your waste as our original rules had. While I appreciate the committee's work and I respect the majority vote, I will be voting against this expansion, not because I oppose allowing dogs, but because I think we need a more thorough and a practical approach. We are just four months away from completing the master plan, which is scheduled for delivery July fifteenth. And this plan will provide a clear vision for land use, including picnic areas, playgrounds, beach access. So making permanent changes now is premature and would be difficult, in my opinion, to reverse. As everyone has heard, we've had enforcement and environmental concerns. Since the trial period began, we've had fifty-two dogs actually in the bridle trail area, fourteen of them off leash and two of them off leash in the eagle area. And I just want to be clear that we were monitoring just the bridle trail area. So I don't know what the other forty-five acres has happening on it. Inland wetlands are a particularly sensitive area where dogs can disturb habitats and contribute to water contamination and Great Island is also home to a lot of wildlife. Coyote, federally protected eagles, foxes, deer, geese, which you might not be big fans of, but they do live there, turkeys, et cetera. Another issue that I think has to be addressed in this is the beach access. We don't allow dogs on our beaches during the summer, but we did not address that. And I want to make sure that everybody understands the animal control officer is very dedicated to Great Island. But we have about two hundred and seventy-five acres of public land in Darien for the animal control officer to monitor, right? We have eight parks or seven parks plus Highland and we have Weed Beach and Pear Tree. So, you know, it's one person that has a very large area to monitor. So rather than making incremental changes now, I think we should take this time to not only wait to see what the master plan's completion looks like on July fifteenth, but also to take this time to establish a comprehensive dog policy for all of our properties, including Great Island. A clear, consistent policy will ensure that dog owners and non-dog owners alike understand the rules and that enforcement can be managed effectively. This isn't about whether dogs should be allowed. I truly support responsible dog access. It's about ensuring that we make the right decisions at the right time. So for these reasons, I will be voting against expanding dog access at this time. And I encourage us to use this time between now and July fifteenth to create a thorough and well-thought-out policy for all of our town properties. So I know I had to read some of that, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. We need to hear from everybody on this. Mike?
Thank you. Monica did a very accurate job of discussing what were the minority opinions of the committee. The majority felt that the enforcement issues can now be addressed through the employment of a dog warden who can actually write these tickets. The committee members that voted in the majority were also inclined to recommend to this board that we work with great speed to increase the amount of fines. The majority view also recalled that the ecologist who spoke, when asked the question, does the impact of a dog on a leash change any differently between that of the impact of a human? And the answer was affirmatively, no. And with regard to the issue on future designations of future use of the island or particular areas, the majority was swayed by that even with the master plan due sometime in July, there is no set timetable for the use of any of those particular parcels of property on the island. So the view was to allow the dogs, again, not on the bridle path, but not be restricted to the pavement areas which are are obviously quite limiting and the inability of dogs to then relieve themselves in grass areas. And the committee just felt that it was time to give this a chance. Obviously, the committee at any time could designate a particular area for no dogs for picnics or no dogs on the beach. That's certainly open for consideration. But the majority view was to allow those access into the non-paved areas as well.
Goodbye. Marcy?
Sure, I think that this discussion has left me with more questions than it has answers at this point. And the number one thing that I have that I truly believe is the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen is how we are going to monitor this and how we're going to regulate this. Certainly, it's concerning that the community is, some people in community are not following the rules. And that's not okay. I would like this committee to come up with a plan on how we're going to enforce any rules that we have here. The current rules, which are allowing the dogs on to paved pathways and any additional adjustments that we may be making to that. So I'd like to continue this discussion because I'm not really, I'm in full support of people being able to bring their dogs and to be able to use the grass areas and to be able to walk in areas that humans are. But I want to come up with a plan, a solid plan, on how we're going to enforce that. And I know that we just recently hired a dog warden and I'd like to see our plan on how we're going to sort of create her resume or create her job descriptions on how this is going to be enforceable. So I need more discussion on this.
Cheryl?
You can say my name? I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't know. Sorry. So I think we have two issues at play here regarding Great Island. I'm very uncomfortable relitigating a vote that occurred last week. I'm very uncomfortable relitigating a decision that was made by that committee. I think our role on this Board of Selectmen is to support the the rules and so forth that are put forth by our commissions and advisory boards. I think we have a separate issue, which is the dog issue. Now, I'm a dog owner, but I don't feel comfortable going into place with dogs off leash. And I think Darien residents collectively are not good about keeping their dogs on leash. And we do it in all the parks. And I think we, as a town, need to deal with that. I think that's a separate issue. There's no reason why we can't deal with that issue very soon. And I understand that we're hiring a dog warden, so to speak, but there are a couple of issues at play here. We have issues with people losing dogs and, you know, a lost dog that's found. We need to deal with those, but we also need to have someone that goes around from like Woodland Park and Cherry Lawn and Great Island on a regular basis and, you know, and checking up. We do need to follow up. We do need to find people. We need people to understand that having dogs off leash and just going wherever they please is not okay. I'm okay with having dogs on leash at Great Island. We have had animals there, including horses, for over a hundred years. And I'm not uncomfortable with the idea of having dogs on the island. I am uncomfortable having unleashed dogs on the island. And I'm uncomfortable relitigating the vote that that committee had last week. I understand it was not an easy decision, but I do think that our role is to support and I think our role is to need to figure out, this is really not the straw that breaks the camel's back, but we really need to now focus on the issue of dealing with the dogs off leash in our parks. And I think we need to figure out, do we hire a second person? I don't know. But we need to focus on that and people need to really understand that by letting their dogs off leash and thinking it's not a big deal, it affects other people and it threatens, you know, the comfort of people at Great Island. We need to figure this out.
Marcy, did you have a point of view as to which way you were on the proposal? I don't think I heard that in your comments.
I, I, I don't think that we need to have dog, you know, expand the dog access tomorrow. I think we need some time in a very short period of time to kind of come up with a monitoring plan. I'm comfortable saying, let's look at this and put a date on it. Six weeks, four weeks, whatever we think as a committee, we could come up with a good monitoring plan. Because my goal is for the warmer months, for the summertime, is to have families be able to use the grass area with their dogs.
Mike, do you have a point of view on it? Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question. So I would be in favor of having the rule become effective in thirty days or forty-five days. But it needs to be a date certain. I think letting it go with then a criteria of that's, that's, you know, ill-defined is, is difficult. I think that if we want to say, let's make this effective in thirty or forty-five days to give the dog warden to set up a plan to ensure that that individual will be able to create enough time and attention to the island to give us an opportunity to start to work to increase the fines. I'm supportive of that, but, I mean, the committee heard all of these arguments. The committee spoke. So I think we can address the concerns I'm hearing tonight by pushing back the effective date, but not have it be dependent on a specific set of circumstances with the understanding that, let's get the warden organized, so the warden's ready to go on, you know, May first or June first or whatever it is. And then work in that period to increase the fines. That makes sense, but to do it without, in another fashion, I think would frustrate the purpose and the intent of the committee.
Okay, a few comments from me. I'm going to take a few steps back. And if we look at the entire town, what we have across our parks and other places is dogs can go lots of places, practically anywhere, as long as they're on leash. That's a general approach that we've had for dogs everywhere, setting aside Great Island for a minute. And the second point, again, sitting at a townwide level, is that we don't have consistent compliance with that. There's a lot of places that people go, particularly Woodland Park, but lots of other places, where you have a lot of non-compliance with that leash rule. Folks take their dogs and they just don't keep them on leash. The third thing that we have going on is that we don't have really a deployed enforcement mechanism. We've had animal control officers in the past, but we don't have a record of saying, well, for those folks who don't have their dogs on leash, that we're going to go out and we're going to enforce that with either warnings or fines or officers out admonishing people to put their loved dogs on leash. The next thing we have is, of course, now we have a dog warden now hired back, so animal control officer actually is the official title. And that person works from eight in the morning until three thirty in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. So we will not have an animal control officer deployed during hours when most people are going to be taking their dogs out, which is after work. And that's particularly in the summer since it won't get dark till eight thirty in June and on the weekends. So when you add up all those problems, that's an issue. But now we introduce Great Island. So Great Island's got some unique characteristics. We don't have our plan ready. We've got some wetlands. We've got protected areas with wildlife. We've got a lot of complicating factors that we don't have on parks and other areas in town. We have the further problem of, well, if we're going to adopt something on Great Island, a lot of people told me that, well, we need to be consistent so that in the mind of the public, they say, okay, I can take my dog, I can go anywhere as long as my dog is on leash and it doesn't matter where I go. And so if we have Great Island with a different set of policies, whether it's a different access policy or a different enforcement policy or anything that's different, that's going to create confusion and it's going to be hard and perhaps inequitable to address and enforce and follow. Because we have different rules for Great Island than we have for different areas in town. So summing up, if we're going to go forward with dog access and we're going to try to be consistent about it, we're going to need to be consistent across town. But we're also going to need to take a step back and say, what are we going to do about enforcement of leash rules? We've not really faced this with all our other towns' properties. We've kind of said, no, twenty percent, fifteen percent, twenty-five percent non-compliance, that's bad. But as a town, we're not going to adopt a serious enforcement strategy for that. When people said they wanted dogs on Great Island, to a person, they said, dogs on leash on Great Island. Everybody has said that. I haven't seen anywhere where there's been any appreciable number of people that say, we want dogs off leash on Great Island. No one's saying that. And so we owe it to those people, if we're going to allow dogs on Great Island, that we're going to have to start enforcing leash rules. And if we're going to enforce them on Great Island, we need to enforce them everywhere. Or we're not going to enforce them, but we can't have a divided approach. So I think it's going to be important, if we vote to do this tonight, that we need to give not just serious, but I'm talking very serious attention to this issue of leash enforcement and start to have a dialogue about how we're going to do this and what the impact is going to be on the community if we start to levy fines. It's clear that the dog warden or the animal control officer, it's great to have that person on board, but that person's hours don't lend itself to when we would need to have, I think, enforcement action. We may need to hire someone to help us with this, say a separate dog warden that is going to monitor all of the properties in town to help us with leash enforcement. And then we need to start having a dialogue with people in town. Are you willing to comply with this? I have to say that, and I don't want to be a prude or anything like that, but it is a little disappointing when we all know what the rules are and yet a lot of folks have decided that they're just not going to follow that rule. And that's an unfortunate feature that we have in the town. And I think collectively, we ought to step back and say, is that really right? Part of the reason we're having this discussion is that people are not following that rule. If everybody could get up and there was very little non-compliance with this, this debate would have been over. But here we're having this and it's because we don't have good compliance with our leash rules. So I think everybody's right. We're going to have to take a close look at enforcement and we owe it to everybody in town to address that enforcement across town for all of our town properties. This won't be an easy change to make. We need to roll it out carefully with lots of communication. But it's time, if we're going to have dogs on Great Island, it's time to enforce leash laws and we're going to do that. So I think, listening to all this, I appreciate that this is an extremely divided issue. We have had a lot of emails from people who are adamant that they must have dogs on Great Island, that they simply refuse to visit without their dogs. I've had very angry people call me out saying, this is outrageous that I can't bring my dog to Great Island. I've had people on the other side, some of whom were tonight on, not angry and upset, but clearly of a mindset that they don't want expanded access and are very concerned about this. We are very divided on this issue and I, it's dogs, it's not national politics, but it is, it's a closely divided topic. And yet we have to make a decision. My recommendation is that we vote to approve the Great Island Committee recommendations for leash, for dog access, as they've stated. But I think we need to do two things. I think we need to give a little extra time to see if we can sort through the enforcement issue. I like May first. If we had to pick a date, that gives us, call it forty-five, fifty days to sort through this. Keep in mind that dog enforcement, we need Parks and Rec approval for them to enforce it on parks, parks, properties. We don't have authority to tell them what to do on this, but we are going to have to collaborate with that. But we're going to have to collaborate with that commission, come to a common answer about how we're going to enforce leash laws. And so I think we can get a lot of that work done by May first. But my sense is that we put very qualified people on the Great Island Advisory Committee to help us with this. It is a very divided vote. Our chairman did not vote for it and I'm empathetic to that. But my read of this situation, that the right thing to do is to approve what they've recommended, set May first as an implementation date and actually charter some individuals on this board, and I will be part of that, to get busy on reaching out to the various entities and groups that need to be part of this. But it's time to come up with an enforcement answer that satisfies what the vast majority of people want, which is leash compliance across all our properties, not just Great Island. Reactions, comments?
So John, I, I hear where you're coming from and I, I, I totally, I understand your position. I think the non-compliance is a problem. And I guess where I'm coming from is, well, first of all, not all of our parks are consistent, right? And maybe that's something that we take a look at. Diller doesn't allow dogs at all, so people will bring that up, right? I'm, I'm, I like pushing the deadline out. I just would ask us to consider pushing it out to July fifteenth. And I say that because I do believe that we will have a plan that will identify some areas that we will not want dogs to be on in the future. And if we wait, we will have that information and we can make that decision then as opposed to having this discussion again. And I do recognize that the committee, you know, it was a very close vote. It was, it was a five to four vote, but that is how they voted. So I, I just suggest that maybe we consider pushing that, that date out a little bit.
Sarah, reactions?
I agree with that. I, I, look, I, I feel that we need to support what the Great Island Committee is presented and not relitigate, but to support. And I think we urgently need to deal with the issue of dogs in this town and come up with a way to force compliance, but to monitor the parks and yes, to find our residents if they are not following the rules.
How do you feel about a date that's pushed out as far as the, the date that we have our plan in place?
I think May is fine.
May, okay. Would you be supportive of going further out to when the plan is actually released and formalized in July?
So be clear about what we're saying, that nothing happens until July. Cause my understanding was that we had dogs and we're going back to the original rules where there was, there was some confusion. Wasn't there, Mike and Monica, could you please clarify for me? There was no dogs originally, right? And there were, the dogs were voted in later.
Yeah, it was a, yeah, it was a little confusing, Sarah. But what I'm, what I'm proposing is that we keep the policy that we had, the trial period policy, and we extend the trial period date to July fifteenth instead of to, to March thirty-first. And that will give us a chance to see what others, what other areas of the property we might want to do other things with. And it'll also, I think it's a, a little bit more of a realistic time, timeframe, especially because we'll be looking for Park and Rec to make a decision. And this is something that we'll need to work with Park or with the RTM to change the ordinance. I mean, right now, the, the animal control officer can write a ticket for twenty-five dollars and there's an additional twenty-four dollars that's attached to it, only for off-leash, nothing else. So if you're in the eagle area with your dog, she doesn't write a ticket for that, okay? It's just if the dog is off-leash. And that is the max that she can write. Twenty-five of that stays with the town, twenty-four of that goes to the state. So if we want to change that number, we need to get RTM approval because we need to change the ordinance. And that's not something that I think realistically we'll have in place by May first, especially during budget season.
Mike, hold on one second. Marcy, reactions to that?
Still more questions than I have answers. I, I think, you know, Lois had mentioned in her public comment about right now, the beaches, the parking and beaches are open to anyone. It's easy to park there. We're not, we're not keeping non-darian residents out. I'm curious to maybe consider or have a conversation about maybe implementing this new dog policy in parallel to when beach stickers come into action. That way we could kind of control the amount of traffic that goes in that area. I think July fifteenth, I understand Monica's thoughts on that and I, I agree with it. But at the same time, I also think that we're having an outcry from public that, and I want to respect the Great Island Commission's vote to get this expedited as soon as possible. And I just, I'm curious to see maybe if we lined it up with beach passes, if that can kind of keep some of the, the additional maybe traffic out, so.
I think beach passes are available now, aren't they, Jennifer?
No, but they don't start checking to what, May thirty? What is it?
Mike?
I think it might be April fifteenth is the, the date that the, they start checking. But whatever that date is, again, the, the goalposts on this just keep moving. And I think the fair thing in respecting the vote of the committee would be to set an effective date, if it's May first, May thirty-first, June first. I think July first is an extraordinarily long period of time. But then that becomes the effective date. It can't be, well, let's come back and talk about it and see where we are and see how many tickets the dog warden tried to write or did write. If, if you want to give, if we think it's proper to give the town time to, to gear up in terms of increasing the fine and helping out the, the dog warden with a clear path, that's reasonable. But to get, to just say, well, let's see how it goes. Let's see what we decide to do with the rest of the island and then come back and talk. And that, that, again, as I said before, I think that just frustrates the intent of the, of the majority. And frankly, if you take the panoply of section of opinion that we've gotten about dogs on Great Island, it's not fifty-fifty. It's, it's not even close to, to fifty-fifty. So I think it would frustrate a great amount of our community unnecessarily. And again, I think make, make a effective date, but not a further discussion date in absence of something so major that we want to just change it entirely. But instead of saying, oh, let's see how it goes, this is the effective date. If we have reason to change that effective date or in the interim eliminate dogs from Great Island entirely or something like that, we'll address that question. But this committee or our, so this committee should be respected on their vote and we should have a, you know, a date certain for those changes, for those amendments to the rules to be effective.
Mike, I would support an effective date, not for the trial to end, but an effective start date of July fifteenth.
I'm obviously, you know, that, I would, I would vote for that. I'm, I'm not supportive of that. I think the date should be earlier, but.
What date would be acceptable?
I think between now, April first and July first, if we say, or July fifteenth, if we say. I'm, I would say even, you know, June, excuse me, June first.
June first? That gives us several opportunities, both on enforcement and fines through the RTM. I don't think, I don't know if they'd get it approved by then, but certainly we could get agreement with Parks and Rec and some others over that period of time. And I certainly would commit to, to working on that. We have a hand raised from our town clerk, Krista McNamara, Krista.
If I may just add one point, June first begins dog licensing season. If I can assist in communication in any way in the twenty-six hundred licenses that are issued in town, just adding that window of time.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Again, I understand the, you know, the trying to get this done sooner. I just go back to, we will have an idea of what we will be doing on the property and we will know at that time, this is an inland wetland, this is exactly where we're going to need it cordoned off. Or we're really pretty committed to, I don't know, a bocce court or a horseshoe pit. And those are, those are things that we can provide our, our residents now. Those are super easy wins and we want to start providing some activities out on the island. So that's the only reason why I'm sticking with when the plan will be done, just because I know we'll have that information. I mean, we can press for that information earlier, but that's, that, that's where I'm getting that particular date.
Since forty, the time between June first and July fifteenth is forty-five days. I, and there's going to be comment and review period between June first and July fifteenth, when the committee is reviewing the plan. Long way to say, I suspect many of these things, Monica, that you're talking about in terms of areas that we really wouldn't want anybody crossing over with a dog or specific restrictions or even just clarity on enforcement. We should have an awful lot of that pretty clear, at least in draft form by June first, in a sense of where that's going to go, maybe some tweaking between then and July fifteenth. But the idea that we would not have any of that on July, on June first, I, I think that's probably not the case. You're correct, it won't be formally voted, formally presented until July fifteenth. But my guess is that we will have figured a lot of that out by June first. In addition, if we set June first as a deadline, we could actually accelerate consideration of dog-related areas of concern so that we try to get clarity on that by June first as opposed to waiting until July fifteenth when the rest of the plan comes together. In other words, we might be able to get most of it pretty clear by June first if we work at it.
Well, I know Reed Hildebrand is working very hard, so I, I can't speak for them as to when this will be, you know, when we'll have this information. I just, I don't know.
Other comments? Let's go, could I get a motion to approve the recommendation of the Great Island Committee to allow dogs on Great Island anywhere, well, just the actual name itself. I'm sorry, I should just read the new rule. Could I get a motion to approve the recommended rule change by the Great Island Committee regarding dogs to read as follows? Visitors are permitted to bring dogs on the property, but they must, must remain on leash at all times and all dog waste must be picked up and properly disposed of in marked receptacles. Dogs are not permitted on the bridle path or any other areas with signs indicating dogs are prohibited. Visitors with dogs who do not abide by such rules may be penalized pursuant to town ordinances. I'd further include in the motion that this board take an active effort or undertake an active effort to advance our enforcement protocols on all town properties with regard to dog leashes and to explore the expanded use of enforcement and fines in that regard. Would anyone care to move that or amend it? Mike moves that, seconds?
Wait, effective when?
Effective June first. Mike moves that, is there a second? Okay, Sarah, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Abstain? Monica, are you voting?
You know, I'll vote for this, but I really think the time should be longer, but I will vote.
Okay, thank you. It's unanimous then. Okay, I appreciate that. I, this is a serious topic. I know there's lots of passions on all sides. I'm going to follow up directly with and get involved myself on the enforcement side across all relevant boards and commissions, the RTM, but also town staff. So I'll spend some real time on this to try to advance the enforcement piece of all this so that we get to the clarity that I know will, will help us. I guess I would further ask anybody who's watching that, that wants to bring a dog on Great Island for now, keep them on the paths until June first, effective June first. Those dogs can go off the paths at Great Island, not in the bridle area, obviously. I would just ask you as a personal favor, keep your dog on a leash. That, that really will help us with regard to managing all our town properties and certainly would be appreciated, so. All right, next up is, looks like we've got a number of service agreements to approve. This board, next item is discuss and take action on a request to extend the services of Hakuna Services Incorporated for fiscal twenty-six, Jennifer.
Thank you. For the record, Jen Fabe, Director of Parks and Recreation. So actually, the next four items, you'll see, they're all kind of pertain to the same issue. In our bid documents, as I put into the, into my, the different memos, the bid documents stated that the Board of Selectmen can extend the license for one or more periods of one year each. So that's why we're coming to you to try to extend these, these four different service agreements. This one in particular is for Hakuna Services. They provide dumpsters year-round at Weed Beach and McGowan Park. We've been happy with their services and they've also said that they will be keeping the same pricing for fiscal year twenty-six. So with that, that amount was included in the proposed twenty, fiscal year twenty-six budget. So that's why we're asking to allow this extension for the coming year.
How does that work? Do you just typically, I don't recall extending these last year. Do you just extend these on an annual basis? And there's really not much to discuss unless pricing or service levels change?
I think it depends on kind of which ones they are. I can't speak to what's happened in the past. This language was in there, but seeing it with some fresh eyes and I reached out to Jen and I know she reached out to the attorneys to just get the read on whether or not this needed to come back or if it could be done administratively. And we were told it should be coming to the Board of Selectmen, so that's why we're here.
Jen Charneski, any comments?
Uh, no, just to echo what Jen said, that with a fresh set of eyes, she came across this language and we need to abide by it. We are considering rewording language that would allow this to be administrative. But for the time being, this is the language that we have in these bids and contracts and we suspect that it's also in others that Jen will encounter as she needs to renew other services.
Yeah, it's the same added language for each agreement, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so just to be clear, the included language reads briefly as follows. Upon the written request of the contractor prior to the expiration of the contract or any extension thereof, the Board of Selectmen may at sole discretion, but shall be under no obligation to extend the license for one or more periods of one year each, provided that A, the contractor is not faulted in its obligations to the town under this agreement, and B, the board determines the extension to be in the best interests of the town. So perfectly understandable. I mean, I've read through the language. It sounds like you're satisfied with the service and the pricing. My recommendation would be we'd approve all of these extensions for one year. Any comments or questions from anybody? Okay, can we do one motion to cover all of them, Jennifer Charneski? Okay, could I get a motion to approve, to approve the extension of the services agreements for Hakuna Services, Spark Security, Service Master, Sosa and Geese Relief, all for fiscal twenty-twenty-six? Okay, Monica moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? And Marcy?
Yeah.
Are you there? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're all set for those items. That's the last one for new business, discuss and take, and discussion and possible action on a municipal option motor vehicle depreciation schedule. Jennifer, agenda, thank you.
Thank you.
This was a last-minute addition, so Tony's not able to be here. He has another commitment, so I will summarize for you what we have going on. The assessment method used for motor vehicles is governed by state statute. And for the October one, twenty-twenty-four ground lift, a new method was put into effect by the state. And this method established. And this method established market value by applying a depreciation percent to the MSRP. And then it progresses from what was in the statute, 85% depreciation if the vehicle is less than one-year-old, all the way down to 15% of MSRP if a vehicle is 15 to 19 years old. And over 20, it's, I think, a minimum of $500 assessment. So the purpose of it was to make future grant list assessments more predictable and to minimize appeals by having a defensible and well-defined depreciation schedule. But as grant lists for 10-124 were being prepared, it became apparent that the new method was causing a significant decrease in motor vehicle assessments. For Darien, that decrease is about $19.4 million in the motor vehicle component of our grant list. The state has passed legislation and the governor signed the legislation last week that would allow for a local option to increase the depreciation percentage. So instead of 85% for a vehicle that's less than a year old, it would be 90%. And so all the percentages would be 5%, 5 percentage points higher. We'd go from $90,000 in year one, all the way down to 20%, or sorry, 90% for less than a year, and it'd be 20% for 15 to 19 years old. This would increase the motor vehicle portion of our 10-124 grant list by about $27 million. And if adopted, this modification would be used for future years as well. It's not just the one time. It would be that we are adopting this modified depreciation schedule.
Yeah, the, the state guys had a panic when the original schedule was, was adopted because, as Jennifer noted, they noted that, they noticed that there would be a substantial decrease in car tax revenue, quite simply. And the worry was that municipalities would shift that tax burden over to property, other property taxes and put folks in, in different towns under rental, rental payment pressure and all of that as landlords tried to shift the increased property taxes to the renters. And so they adopted the schedule that allowed the municipalities to basically scoot the entire depreciation schedule at 5 percentage points, as Jennifer said. You know, this seems reasonable and I suspect most places will do it, but it stabilizes kind of the ratio of car-related taxes to other property taxes in town in what I think is a reasonable way. So I'm supportive of this and I think that's, that was a good explanation. Comments, questions? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the revised municipal option motor vehicle depreciation schedule for the town of Darien? Mike moves. Sarah seconds, all in favor? And Marcy, you're a yes? Marcy, are you there? Okay, she may be offline. I will put that down as a four to zero vote in favor. Thank you. Okay. All right, we have no old business. We do have the minutes from our meeting on February 24th. I've read through them. I look okay. Does anyone have any corrections from the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the minutes for February 24th? Mike moves. Monica seconds, all in favor? Thank you. All right, agenda review. So flood update, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but the Seagate Association approved us doing soil samples, which is the last piece of the pie, if you will, for the design work for the Salt Box Project. And I think those are done or close to being done, but that will enable us to submit those design plans to the DEEP and to the RV Corps of Engineers, which is a big step forward in that process. You'll also recall from our last meeting that we have $500,000 in grant money to support that, that project. So that's going to certainly help. And then right behind that is the Tilly Pond project. I don't have an update as to the design status there, but we will get a flood update soon. On the flag redesign, we have Harris Command finalized survey number two for that. There's been a, that's also been a fairly divided topic. There's lots of folks on both sides of this, whether we keep the current flag or consider some other design options. That survey's out until next Monday. And so what I'll do is we're, we're going to summarize that and I will get Harris at our next Board of Selectmen meeting to report on those results and potential next steps with that. So please take the survey if you have not already. That is in a special newsletter that I sent out at the first of last week. And please, please fill out if you can. We'd love to hear from you. So anything else for agenda review to add? Okay. Upcoming meetings, Board of Selectmen, next meeting, March 24th, 2025. I believe that's all we have for this evening. Jennifer, anything else?
I think Sarah had a comment on agenda review.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. I was just going to say, can we talk about the dog leash?
You know what? I am not going to have any problem adding a dog leash on here. In fact, it's going to be new business, old business, leagues on report, everything. It's going to be on everything.
Good.
Yes, we're going to be talking about dog leash. I will, I will send out a note with some proposed summary points from all this, which I'll report the next Board of Selectmen meeting. And I will reach out to Parks and Rec. It was good that Jen Fava was on the call this evening. But we're going to move that right along. So more to come, but we'll make that part of the Board of Selectmen meeting agendas for all meetings, at least through June 1st. So we'll be talking about that at every meeting. Okay, if there is nothing else, could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Okay, Sarah moves. Mike seconds, all in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, friends.
Thanks, everybody.